...ground demo that they did. All right. The remaining work still has to get done. All right. And the bid to complete the work on the Hymas bid is eighteen thousand. You have that as the last page of the attachment that you were handed today. All right. It is eighteen thousand to finish this, okay? Since we've already established the precedence tonight that you don't put liens on property as long as we have an agreement to pay, I'll agree to pay. Get Hymas out here and finish the work. Take out the floor, take out the footings, cap the sewer, and I'll pay for the job. I have no problem with that. But right now, seven thousand three hundred and twenty dollars is all that's been done. So, I'll pay that tonight if you want. But it's eighteen thousand more to finish the job if I have to go hire someone to finish it. And that will be offset from the bill that I pay the city.
What is the amount that you said that's... Sorry. First of all, do I have permission to talk to your client directly since he's addressing?
No, you can take it.
The... what was the seven thousand number? What is that exact number that Mr. Shannon is saying the work that has been completed thus far?
Seven thousand three hundred.
And where are you getting that number?
So, the seven thousand three hundred would come from the amount of the bid, which was twenty-five... Twenty-five three twenty.
I would ask that if your cli- Okay, I would ask that if your client is not going to allow me to question him directly, that he not speak from the audience. Where is the seventy-three hundred coming from?
So, the... so, the bid amount you see there is the twenty-five through twenty minus the eighteen thousand would give you the seven thousand three hundred and twenty.
And what are you looking at?
Do you have a copy of the bid? The lien amount that was asserted?
Yeah, so you're saying that only seventy-three hundred dollars worth of work was completed?
Seven thousand three hundred and twenty. And that's going off of the bid by Hymas Construction, by the amount of the lien that has been asserted, as well as the... As well as the quote by Don Anderson Construction of eighteen thousand to repair the property. If you look at the... and I don't know if you have the materials in front of you. If you look at the Hymas bid itself, it shows that the numbers are actually fairly match out because if you look under page two of the Hymas Corp. bid...
Are you talking about the proposal to your client or the bid to the city?
The bid to the city.
Okay.
On page two, you have option footing, wall removal. And under that option price is eleven thousand eight hundred and eighty-five.
That's a proposal to your client, sir? That's not the bid on the city?
Well, the city went off this proposal.
No, they didn't. The city went off of the page prior to that, the proposal to the city of Bellevue and the amount of twenty-nine thousand eighty-eight dollars and thirty cents.
Correct. But the itemization was on page two.
Which is a proposal to your client, not the city.
Correct.
They're two different... they're two different things. And if you add up the proposal to your client, it's a little... it's close to that thirty thousand. This is a completely separate proposal to your client.
Are you suggesting that the bid for the foot and wall removal is completely different between these two?
No, what I'm saying is, is that in the bid to your client, the Main Street Properties, there's an option price of eleven thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. And that includes removing the floor slab and footings. I agree with you on that. I could read that. But it also includes removal of the north and east building walls, which was completed.
Correct.
So, you cannot just minus out the whole eleven thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars and say that that was the total cost for the floors and the footings. Because that was also included the cost of removing the walls, which work was completed. The walls were removed, correct?
Everything above the floor slabs was demolished. But you have everything in the floor slabs, everything in the footings. The sewer caps beneath were not shut off. And to that same point, sewer caps, it's almost like the same issue. Because if the sewer caps weren't cut off, you have to get underneath those floor slabs to shut them off.
Okay, and I know we're running up against our city council meeting, but let's look at your client's bid really quick. The bid price, seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars, the top item? Did this... was all of that stuff done?
Yes.
Okay. Option number... option number two, the option price eleven thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars? The north and the east building walls, those were removed, correct?
There's no itemization on here that separates that walls from the floor slabs.
Okay, but those were removed, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, the only thing in the second option for the bid price of eleven thousand eight hundred and eighty-five that was not done was removing the floor slabs and the footings, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and then on the... The final option for fifteen thousand one hundred and ninety-four dollars, that work was complete, correct?
So, the excavating and removing the wall footings in the demo from the building was a majority of that eleven thousand eight hundred and fifty... eighty-five that you see there. You don't see an individual itemization for the removing the north and east wall buildings. So...
And so, that's your theory that we just shouldn't have to pay Hymas for the work that's been completed?
Well, haven't you yourself admitted that some of the work hasn't been performed? I mean, why assert a lien against Main Street Properties for the full amount if you're conceding that some of the work hasn't been done according to the bid?
Just to clarify, I didn't concede that. The work that was not completed, which was removing of the floor slabs, was approximately thirty-seven hundred dollars, and that was removed from the Hymas Corp. bid. What is before the Board of Equalization tonight represents the value of the work that was actually completed by Hymas. And I'll just leave it at that.
That is the majority of the work that was not... was not provided. You also have the sewer caps. And the sewer caps is part of the city's bid. You see it right there on the first page. Hymas Corp. will verify condition of existing utilities and cap sewer as required. This is a public health safety issue. So, you have the underlying horizontal vertical bars that goes to all the other tenants. Sure, that can't be capped off. So, you have that underlying horizontal that goes to all the other tenants. Sure, that can't be capped off. But there are individual vertical horizont... vertical connections to the underlying sewer. None of those were capped off and they were required to be at the property. So, you have that soil being put on top of that, which is a health safety issue because you have the sewers gases coming out from the ground into the ambient air where the public is exposed. And as part of the city's bid, they agreed that they would cap the sewers as required. So, that is a big health safety issue, which was not completed. I don't understand why the city isn't willing to correct this. I mean, why is the city not willing to correct the floor slabs? Correct the sewer caps?
I think your client had every opportunity prior to this happening to... he says he would pay for it, right? Excuse me? I... he had every opportunity to pay for this the way he wanted it done. He's saying he would pay for it now if they came back and did it. Why are... why are we in this position? This is the city... the city's job is to make that property safe. It has nothing to do with making that property buildable.
And to that point, they haven't made it safe. If you have sewer gases going into the ambient air, you're not making it safe for...
Mr. Christensen, are you still back there? I have a question for you, please.
I... I know that we're live for the city council right now, so I'll just state for anybody that's listening, we'll get to the city council meeting very shortly.
Any other applicant that would come in to make that property safe if it wasn't the city? Is there anything you would have done differently or required differently? As to how the sewer was capped or not capped or...
I mean, the main sewer line is being utilized by the rest of the tenants.
Would you have required all the vertical separate lines to be capped?
To take care of that, and they've placed dirt on it. If there's an issue, they said they would come back and take care of it. I don't know how at this point you would acknowledge whether they had performed that or not with the dirt being on top of it. And as far as sewer gas, every house that's built today vents out through the roof.
Okay, so in your opinion, there is no hazard?
No.
All right, thank you. Public hearing is still open? Anybody else want to speak? Okay, seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. And I'm going to read item number seven, Resolution Boe Number two zero two zero dash zero seven two one dash zero two, levying of a lien for non-payment of costs associated with demolition and removal of structure on the identified properties within the city of Bellevue. So, are there any questions from the council at this point?
Let's do a motion first.
I'll take a motion. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve Resolution twenty twenty dash zero seven two one dash zero two.
I'll second it.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch.
And for verification is that lien is for... what's the dollar amount?
Twenty-five three twenty.
There you go. Yep, twenty-five three twenty.
Thank you.
And Susan, just for clarification, this meeting was published at least ten days prior to the Board of Equalization meeting being held tonight?
Yes, it was.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch, please vote.
We have five yes votes and one abstention.
Thank you. I'll call Councilman Shannon back to the bench. And I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to adjourn the Board of Equalization.
I'll second.
Motion by Preister, seconded by Shannon, please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. And I'll give them a second to set up. Do we need a second? Okay. For the city council meeting. For those people watching live, our Boe meeting ran a little bit long, and we will be on with our city council meeting here in about thirty seconds. All right, thanks for being patient. Welcome to the Bellevue City Council Meeting. It is Tuesday, July twenty-first, two thousand twenty, at six eleven P.M. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. Institute of Republic, religious command, one nation, under their God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father Tom Jones? Yep, there he is. Father Tom Jones from the Church of the Holy Spirit's with us for the invocation.
Heavenly Father, as we gather to conduct the business of our city, we do so seeking your guidance and your blessing. Give our representatives discerning hearts as they listen to those who offer witness about the issues at hand and enable those who address this body to state clearly their thoughts and concerns so they may fully understand and properly assess the community impact of the options before them. Guide the members of this esteemed body to make wise decisions in the work they do this day, that the choices they make are made with right intentions, with a mind towards the proper stewardship of the public resources they have been entrusted with and in the best interest of the people they serve. We give thanks for their continued commitment to the nation that we are part of, to being faithful keepers of the environment you have provided to sustain us and through which you generously bless us, and their due diligence ensuring the safety and security of all of those in Bellevue. Enable all present to see that what we hold in common as citizens of this city is more important than our differences so that working together, we might make a difference in the lives of those we encounter along our journey and those who depend upon us to act faithfully and responsibly. Finally, Lord, bless all those who gather in this place, that they may know your love and grace and knowing it, embrace it, share it, and let it be what guides us as a community towards right relationship with you and one another. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Father. Susan, would you call the meeting to order, please?
Mr. Stinson?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Shannon?
Here.
Mr. Preister?
Here.
Mr. Burns?
Here.
And Ms. Welch?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. Five, approval of agenda, consent agenda, claims and advisory committee reports. Five A, approval of the agenda to have a motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve the agenda.
Subject.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Cook. Any questions, comments? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to amend the agenda by withdrawing item ten A, which the applicant has asked us to withdraw.
Any other comments or questions? Okay.
I'll make a second.
Thank you.
So, we have a motion by Preister, seconded by Shannon to amend the agenda by withdrawing ten A as the applicant requested. Any comments on that amendment? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. We have a motion by Shannon, seconded by Cook, to approve the agenda as amended. Any comments? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item five B, approval of the consent agenda. Items marked with an asterisk are approved where the item is unless otherwise removed. Any changes? Okay, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Preister to approve the consent agenda. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. There are no special presentations this evening. There's none... no citizen communication requests were received. Item ten, liquor licenses. Go to ten B. Recommend approval of application of Taco Taraza LLC doing business as Taco Taraza for a Class I dash one-two-three-seven-seven-one liquor license at five-one-three Fort Crook Road North, Bellevue, for and for Servando Alvarez as manager. Is the applicant here this evening? Come forward, please. I'll open... please state your name and address.
My name is Servando Alvarez, and our business location is five-one-three Fort Crook, Bellevue.
Okay. Unless you have anything particular to say, we'll just hang around for questions? If the council has any?
Well, if you guys have questions, you can ask me. Our plan is to open a restaurant, my wife and I. Her name is Sandra, which is over there. And we apply for liquor license, and we hoping to get it.
Okay. So, I'm going to open the public hearing. If you just have a seat, then we'll call you up if we have any questions for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing up for the Taco Taraza LLC liquor application. Is there anybody here wishing to speak for or against? For or against the liquor application? Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion. Councilman Cook?
I just have a question. Two questions for you, real quick. Is this... is your primary business as a restaurant?
No, it'll be... It's going to be our first business, and it's a restaurant. It'll be our first time to open a restaurant business.
Okay.
So, we are new in this business.
But it is a restaurant?
It is a restaurant.
And what are your hours going to be?
It'll be from ten to noon, serving breakfast. And for four to nine, it'll be dinner. And that's where we trying to sell the liquor.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Margaritas, I hope? Okay, any other questions, comments? I'll take a motion. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion that we recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, the application of Taco Taraza LLC doing business as Taco Taraza for a Class I-one-two-three-seven-seven-one liquor license at five-one-three Fort Crook Road North, Bellevue, and for Servando Alvarez as manager.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. Any comments or questions? Councilman Shannon?
Just want to say welcome to the Bellevue business community. I look forward to coming and visiting you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, please vote. Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item eleven, ordinances for adoption, third reading, eleven A, ordinance number four thousand. Request to rezone lots one and two, Watson's Replat three, being a replat of lot two, Watson's Replat two from AG to AG and ML for the purpose of industrial development. Applicant is DLWC Real Estate LLC. General location is Cornhusker Road and Thirty-Sixth Street. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
An ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for... Just a second, I'll... please. As provided for by Article Three of Ordinance Number thirty-six nineteen, by changing the zone classification of land located at Cornhusker Road and Thirty-Sixth Street, more particularly described in Section One of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. So, I'll take a motion. Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve ordinance number four thousand.
Motion by Preister, seconded by Stinson. Any comments or questions? Ordinance number four thousand. Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item eleven, A one, approval of the preliminary plat lots one and two, Watson's Replat three. Take a motion for that. Councilman Shannon?
I'd make a motion that we approve the preliminary plat lots one and two.
Second.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Preister. Any questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item eleven A two, approval of the final plat lots one and two, Watson's Replat three. Councilman Shannon?
I make a motion that we approve the final plat for lots one and two, Watson's Replat three.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Preister. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item twelve, ordinances for public hearing, second reading, twelve A, ordinance number four thousand one. Request to rezone lots one through three, Hidden Hills, second addition, being a replat of lots forty-three B one, forty-seven B, and part of lot forty-eight B, Marion Park, all located in the north half of Section twenty-five, Township fourteen, range thirteen, east of the Sixth PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, and part of Lot one lying west of Canyon Road, the north forty feet of Lot two and Lot three B one Jewel Place, all located in the southeast quarter of Section twenty-five Township fourteen north, range thirteen east of the Sixth Prime Meridian, Sarpy County, Nebraska, from RE to RS one-twenty for the purpose of single-family residential development. Applicant is Sherwood Properties. General location, Combs Road and Canyon Road. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
An ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article Three of Ordinance Number thirty-six nineteen, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about Combs Road and Canyon Road, more particularly described in Section One of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. I will read items twelve A one and twelve A two. Twelve A one, approval of the preliminary plat lots one through three, Hidden Hills, second addition. And twelve A two, approval of the final plat lots one through three, Hidden Hills, second addition. And I'll open it up for public hearing as the developer here.
Mayor and City Council, good evening. My name is Mark Westergaard. I'm with E&amp;A Consulting Group, one oh-nine oh-nine Mill Valley Road. And with me here tonight is John Von Kamp, who's the attorney for the project, and also Jerry Standford, who is the owner and developer of the property with Sherwood Homes. Sherwood Homes has been a longtime developer, landowner, and builder in the Bellevue area. And they have owned this piece of property for a long time. We have looked at various things to do with this and looked at various concepts, starting with much more denser projects, in discussions with staff. We have come down to what is before you tonight, which is taking these six small lots that you see, which are tax lots, and combining them into three buildable lots that meet the RS one-twenty zoning, which is what the... most of the surrounding area, including Hidden Hills, is zoned. Effectively, we meet the... or nearly meet the RE, the residential estate zoning, because we have three... three units, three housing units on three acres of ground, roughly two-point-nine-eight. So... but because we had a sewer line that ran down one of the lots... Would you turn the final plat on, Shirley? So here are the three lots we're talking about. The, um, the westerly lot which, uh, borders on Bellevue Boulevard, uh, is, is well over an acre. The middle lot is over an acre. And because of that existing sewer line that comes out of Hidden Hills, the easterly lot, um, was slightly smaller than that, so. Um, that's, that's the physical configuration that we're, uh, we're dealing with here. Um, we were asked, uh, a lot of questions at the planning commission. Um, they dealt for, with everything from, uh, trees to grading to, um, traffic to wildlife disturbance to property values. And, um, I think we did a, a fairly good job of answering, uh, those concerns. Um, there are, you know, effectively, we are less dense than, than the rest of the areas out there and so we're proposing three home sites. Um, the, the price of the homes, uh, we testified at, at the planning commission would be, uh, in the order of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That is what Sherwood Home, uh, kind of the price range that they build in many other subdivisions around Bellevue and greater Omaha area. And, uh, we will, uh, we will stand by that, uh, uh, that estimate of the home value. Uh, talking about the access just a little bit, um, lot one that you see, which is the easterly lot, that will have access off, uh, Canyon Drive with a, with a direct driveway. The access to lot two, which is, uh, right there, is, um, is via an easement, a private easement that will go along the northerly edge of lot one, uh, to serve that. And then lot three will be served with the driveway off of Bellevue Boulevard. Um, some of the comments from the public, uh, talked about Combs Road being vacated. Um, our title work shows that although Combs Road is unimproved, it is, it is not in fact vacated. Uh, there, there are no improvements there and we're trying to respect that with, uh, with doing a private driveway that will serve lot, lot two. Um, I'd like to reserve some time to answer, uh, questions that, that we may have from the, from the public or from the neighbors. Uh, but I'll leave you with two, uh, two kind of interesting facts. One, there are six lots here, but because there are tax lots that are big enough to meet the zoning that is there, without even doing this plat, there actually could build three homes in this area without this plat. This just cleans it up and identifies, uh, some of the existing easements and the access issues. Um, and the other kind of interesting fact is when you look at, at density in the surrounding neighborhood and what we're planning on doing. So we're planning on building houses that will be somewhere between, oh, seventeen hundred square feet for a floor footprint to about twenty-five hundred square feet. And if you do the math on what we have there, our coverage is somewhere between three and a half and five percent. That would be our footprint coverage. If you do the Hidden Hills area, inside the Loop Road and Hidden Hills and do that same exercise, you get about nineteen percent of building coverage. So, uh, my point being that, uh, what we're proposing here is something on the order of three to five times less than what our, our neighbors have in Hidden Hills. So it's a much less dense subdivision. With that, we ask for your approval and I will, uh, be happy to respond to any comments from the public. Yes, sir.
The smallest of the three lots, we're looking at a thirty-five foot plus drop in the backyard. What kind of grade are we talking about there?
Um, the, the grade in the backyard, that's a three to one slope that's shown there. So we'd be showing a three to one slope. And I, I will say that our grading intent here, this is not a cornfield subdivision. Our intent is to remove a minimum amount of trees, just enough for the homes in the driveways, and also to do a minimum amount of grading just to get the homes in. So, um, that may mean some specially designed homes, uh, that, that would have some supporting walls maybe in the rear so that we don't have to do so much grading and, uh, a- and the intent is so that we won't do as much grading. Just minimal to get the houses in.
Wow.
Yes, sir.
I take it for that middle lot that it's gonna, are you, your private drive, is that gonna go up Combs Road where?
It's gonna go, you see that dash line on, that's, that's on the south side of Combs Road? That is the actual easement. So it will go up along Combs Road. It'll actually be part of lot one.
So basically it'll intersect with Combs and Canyon Road?
That's correct.
Okay. And what kind of slope are we talking about and how wide of a driveway and everything that's going up there?
That, that driveway, that, you're, you're right in the bottom of Combs, uh, that has a very reasonable slope on it. Can't tell exactly what the slope on it, but I, I would say that's somewhere between a three and a five percent slope going up there, so. Now, that part, uh, along Combs Road is actually not very steep at all. The, the steepness comes as you go towards the south and are rising towards the existing lots and Hidden Hills.
I guess my concern is when it, when the water and stuff comes down that private drive, there's a house right at the bottom at Canyon, uh, the Milos House there. And the water's just gonna go straight into their, their yard and stuff and we've gonna, you're gonna have erosion problems through their yard.
Are you talking about through lot two, through the house on lot two?
Yeah, your private drive, it's gonna come and intersect with Canyon and Combs. There's a house right there on that corner of Canyon and Combs, uh, when I was up there, uh, a couple days ago looking at it. And I kind of figured that's where your drive is gonna come down to. But that water that's gonna come down that drive is gonna go right into their yard. There's no storm sewers or anything to catch that to take it out of there.
There, there actually is a storm sewer there. So our, our intent, and we would do this when we get into the final design and the city staff would approve this with the building plans, but that driveway would be, would be tipped so that the, the drive, the water would go over to the Combs Road, Road right away and go to that existing storm sewer that's in Combs Road.
Okay. That's just a, a dirt road there, isn't it? Uh, that?
Yeah, ju- just past, just past the, the intersection, um, there is a, there is a flared end section where that storm sewer, uh, ends. And then it goes to the, it goes easterly.
Okay, I guess I missed that when I was looking at it. I didn't see any.
It's hard to see.
Storm sewer.
It is hard to see, but there is storm sewer there. Any other questions?
Councilman Preister?
One of the other questions that, uh, was in the letter that's in our packet from the homeowners association was dealing with the erosion during construction and the amount of vehicles. Uh, I believe you said there would be a minimum of, or maximum of six vehicles at, at one time. Uh, I think you, uh, are limiting that. I'm, I'm just looking at the, uh, impact to the folks in the area during construction from the vehicles, but also during, uh, the erosion during that time period too. And I know you've got guidelines by the NRD that the city is a party to, but could you kind of address both of those issues?
Well, we would put up the normal requirements for, to stop erosion and maintain it on our property, whether that be silt fence or wattles, um, that would protect the downstream property owners from s- from silt. We're not gonna stop all of the water from getting down there, obviously. It goes down there, but we're trying to stop all the silt. I think your, your comment on the number of vehicles was, Mr. Standford responded, um, you know, about how many subcontractors are working on a house at one time and how many, what size of the crew might be. And I think, I think that was in response to that, if they're, if they're drywalling or if they're doing the driveway or if they're roofing, um, you know, that crew might be up to six people. They may all have their own cars, they may not, but that, that, I think it was in response to that, so that would kind of be the maximum number of vehicles that might be there during construction. W- we also said that we're, you know, now that it's going to be instantaneous, but the intent is to be in and out of here in a relatively short period of time. These type of houses take six to seven months to build and, and, uh, uh, depending on the market, um, you know, we could go one at a time or maybe, maybe all three would go at the same time, so. Th- this is not intended to be a long-term project where there's disruption for a, a, a long period of time.
Okay. And the one house would be coming, all the construction, everything would be coming off the Boulevard. So it would just be the two houses that.
Off of Canyon. Yes, that's correct. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Welch?
So I take it that these are not, these are spec lots, correct? There's no, there's nobody that has said, I'm ready to buy these and I'm ready to build a house.
I'll let Mr. Standford ask you that question.
Okay.
Mayor Hikes, members of the city council, Jerry Standford, uh, with Sherwood Homes, Sherwood Properties, one forty-seven eleven Industrial Road. Uh, that is a good question. Uh, we have no buyer in our pocket for these houses at this time.
Okay.
Uh, there may be a my- buyer. We build both, uh, pre-sale and, uh, and speculative homes.
And this was land that you guys had owned for quite a long time, correct?
Uh, I, I believe the purchase agreement was back in, I wanna say nineteen seventy-four or five.
Okay.
And Sherwood Homes was not the developer of Hidden Hills. Sherwood Homes purchased the lots that we owned in there and then this pe- and also this piece of ground.
Okay.
That abutted the Boulevard.
And I know that Sherwood Homes, I've sold several of your houses. You have a good product and you're very conscientious about what you do. And that is on public water and sewer, correct, Tammy? Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I'll remind everyone that the public hearing is still open. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak regarding this development? Thank you. We'll stick around and we'll bring you back up if we have any questions.
My name is Mary Ann Johnson and I live at eight twenty Hidden Hills Drive. I am representing the homeowners association as president of that association. Uh, I've been asked to speak on their behalf. Um, Mr. Westergaard spoke to the slope of the lots. Um, and said, and, uh, said that the Combs Road had not been vacated. It may not have been officially vacated, but it was abandoned by the city because of their inability to keep that roadway from flooding due to the runoff from Bellevue Boulevard. That runoff does still go through that abandoned Combs Road area. And as the slope is from the west to the east, the lowermost lot that is going to meet up at Canyon and the bottom of Combs Road is going to experience whatever waterfall comes down from the properties above. The intersection that they are proposing to do a little bit of pavement on, um, is right now, um, it has a hairpin turn on it from Canyon onto Combs. The Milos property at seven oh one Canyon Road is almost one hundred percent below road level. So all of that property that all of that water is flowing to is under the street level. The city of Bellevue in Hidden Hills Drive does not address any of the erosion that occurs off the Boulevard. The water comes in at the entryway of Hidden Hills Drive and flows down either on the north or the south side of the entryway. Some of that water goes around and to the north, some of it comes down around to the south. I happen to live on the south side. The water, um, courses down the hill unimpeded on the west to the south side of Hidden Hills Drive where it enters a storm drain and then erodes tremendously the ravine that backs onto Hidden Hills and separates us from Waldrew's property. The property that gets eroded immensely is owned by the Waldrews Homeowners Association. So it's not city property that's being flooded, but it is being flooded by water that fa- falls and runs through the city's storm drain system. That does cross a small piece of my property, which was an out tax lot that we bought just because we didn't want anyone to think that they could get an access from our other lot and our home lot between our two properties. That does erode. Uh, this past month, we've had a number of very large trees fall into this ravine because of undermining from the runoff that goes through this area coming off the city storm drain. Also, coming down, I imagine a lot of it from the Canyon Road down the backside of Hidden Hills. It'd be nice if you could put that plat map back up for people if they want to see it. Thank you very much. Um, there's an excess amount of runoff that comes back behind and through Jewel Park and behind the, the dog park and has created a ravine that has been bridged. I don't know if the bicycle people put the bridge there, but there is a bridge and the ravine is deeper than I am tall by quite a bit. So there is runoff in the area already and some of that comes from that Canyon Road and Combs Road area flowing through Jewel Park. Residents are very concerned that that intersection, once it's put in by the developer, will have to be maintained by the city. And if the runoff is going into this very difficult to see storm, uh, drain, where does the runoff go? Where does it end up? Does it come back into the Hidden Hills area? Is it carried off down Combs Road, which is just a gravel road, uh, slightly mounded to let water flow on either side of it? It does wash out, it does get muddy. There is no indication that that is going to be paved at any time soon. We don't know where all this runoff that's going to come down these slopes is headed. The seven oh one Canyon Road property is going to probably experience quite a bit more water than it already receives because if this easement where the driveways for the two lower lots come out, that's right at their property, right across from their property. So we have some major concerns about, uh, drainage and runoff and erosion of, uh, surrounding properties and including city property. So, we'd just like to know what is the plan to prevent excessive runoff? That is one of the main reasons why this property was never developed. The proposed density of apartment buildings that was turned down, smaller lots were turned down. But even though they're making the lots bigger, they're still not addressing the problem of added erosion and runoff. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tammy, um, can you come up to the mic, please? Um, regarding the runoff, do you know where that storm drain exits? Is it?
We can probably, Shirley, would you be able to pull up the aerial?
Then while she's doing that, um, on their final plan, their final plat, then they would have to have a water runoff plan with that that the department would approve.
So per our current watershed regulations and policies, the developer cannot do anything that negatively impacts the surrounding areas or increases the amount of water they are already getting. Um, so this has been an item that has been specifically reviewed by staff. We've talked to the developer about it over, uh, the past several months. Um, our city engineers have looked at it as well. So, yes, there will be a plan in place that, again, whatever they do, they cannot negatively impact what is already occurring in the area. Um, they will improve the intersection at Canyon Road and Combs Road and that's an area that will be looked at again so that the neighbor that is at the corner, um, of Combs and Canyon does not take on any additional runoff due to this project. But yes, that is something that will be reviewed as, you know, building plans come in and as the development would occur.
So it appears maybe that storm drain is right at the end of Canyon Road there? Is that what I'm looking at or is that just a gully?
Mark, can you, they, correct, I, Mr. Westergaard can probably verify, cause he's verified it out in the field, but I think you can see it right there on the yeah, go ahead and point it out.
This is where the flare ends.
Okay, that's what I was thinking.
It goes eastward.
So does that probably go down to like Main Street or? Um, where does that exit?
That I'm not sure. We would have to ask Public Works.
Okay, but you do have, uh, they, they are required to come up with a plan. Um, I guess I applaud the developer for, you know, having that low usage for that space. I think that's the best space we could, uh, I think that's the best plan we could hope for, for that area.
As Mr. Guard pointed at, Mr. Westergaard pointed out, there will be minimal grading, um, which I also believe will help the area. Um, this plan, we feel as city staff, keeps the impact to a minimum on the adjacent area.
Then my guess is your driveways and everything will, will go towards that storm drain, storm area, so. Which will prove.
Correct.
Any questions? Actually, I'll remind, is there anybody else in the public that would like to speak? Please come forward. Please come forward. Try to get all of our questions out here at once.
Okay, Kelly Carver, eight four eight Hidden Hills Drive. I am the house right when you come in on Hidden Hills on your left. I have all the wood because we burn a lot of wood. I am concerned about the traffic because since you opened the dog park, we had increased number of traffic. Since you did that development off of Main Road, that one tied to what it's acreage lots, we have an increase of people coming through our neighborhood. We have College Heights people come through our neighborhood and the river, whatever, the one that sits up on the ridge behind us on College Heights, they use our neighborhood as a pass through all the time. We did ask for a traffic study through the neighborhood last year because we were concerned about the number of people using our road. I am there on the corner, so I see everybody that comes in and out of the neighborhood, basically. And no, I don't have small children or anything like that, but it does do wear and tear on the roads. That gravel road out the back, when I used to work at Bertha Barber as a para, I would always take it. It gets really, in the winter time, it will like, sides will fall off and have to come back and regrade it. So I'm concerned if you're going to bring in grading equipment, is it going to be big grading equipment? Is it gonna affect our road? Because we do have potholes that you guys have come and fixed, but, I mean, and I live, so I know when it rains really hard, where all the water goes from my backyard because it goes down, the Everets that live up here goes down and then it goes right to lot, what is it? Forty, that one middle lot, it's just gonna go right to that, yeah, there. So I don't understand how y'all are gonna fix that drainage because it washes, if you have a really good storm, that along Combs Road, that drainage right there, it's washed out, all the grass is pushed down. So I, y'all said there's a drainage thing right there, but obviously it's not effective since there's so much washout after a big storm. So anyway, that's all I have to say. Any questions?
Councilwoman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for the president of the homeowners association.
I have to fill this out, right?
So my question is, is the homeowners association not wanting anything to be built in there or just want to be reassured how all the water is going to be in erosion and those types of things are taken care of?
I think if you were to take a vote among residents, no one wants anything built, but that is most likely, under the circumstances, not going to be a reasonable outcome. They bought these properties a long time ago. They are poor quality building properties because of these issues. So that if they are going to come in and disrupt what is there, what is going to be done to ensure that all of the surrounding properties don't have to bear the problems that additional development incurs? I don't know that he is here or if he's watching, but there is a resident who lives up on Doubting Court who has had to truck in twenty-three dump truck loads of dirt soil to fill in erosion from his property just below him on, on the area north of where this development is going to be. I, I don't believe his property touched, excuse me, touches Combs Road, but it is quite close to that. So that there is erosion, not just at the bottom, but around, as Mrs. Carver said, around from both the north and the south side developments. I don't know if there's erosion problems with the Bellevue Boulevard properties through this area. I don't know, but I do know that from Doubting Court and from Hidden Hills and then from Canyon Road that there is erosion.
So if Tammy Palm has mentioned that, you know, the engineers are looking at this very closely and there's a lot of measures that are in place to help ease the water issues, correct, Tammy? I mean, there, you guys monitor this pretty close.
Correct. As part of the review process, one of the things that our engineering team looks at is, you know, grading, detention, runoff, all of those things. We are well aware that there are issues out there. As I stated before, under the current watershed partnership principles and regulations, the developer can, cannot come in and negatively impact what is occurring out there now.
So based on what Tammy Palm has mentioned to us, does that help the homeowners association?
Not in my case in the least bit because I see what has been done to handle runoff now and it's inadequate. It has carved huge chasms in the properties behind our homes on the south side of Hidden Hills Drive. And then on the, through Jewel Park itself, there's a very deep chasm. And that is from stormwater runoff that just goes into storm drains because of the steepness of the properties feeding into that. And you can say, oh, well, the developer can't do this. Okay, the developer is done, built, city lets them go. And then who takes care of it afterwards? Because from what I see right now, the city is not taking care of storm runoff in a way that prevents runoff that does disrupt property.
Has this, has this runoff or these issues been brought to the attention of the city? Public Works, planning, any of those other departments?
I have spoken with one of the councilmen about it in the past, but I don't get any, I don't get any feeling that the city really pays much attention to Jewel Park. It's an undeveloped park, which is wonderful, but with all the traffic that it gets now, particularly during this COVID period, it gets a lot of foot traffic. There are a lot of trees coming down, big trees.
Well, and, and I understand.
Erosion is contributing.
I understand your concerns, but sometimes I know that the city can't fix it if it's not been brought to their attention.
And my thought is, doesn't the city examine its properties? Because this has been going on for quite some time and apparently it's not a concern of the city that there is water runoff. And I'm just concerned that once this is built and the developer leaves the area, then the city will not address erosion issues and that seven oh one property is, if that is underwater, if anything happens at that intersection in the way of flooding.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
One further question for you, ma'am? Okay. I want to restate this and make sure I understand what you're saying. So we have a problem that exists today and it's a bad problem. And you're talking about using words like chasms of, you know, in the water and, and, and all of this. So the developer, he's not going to make it worse. He's not allowed to make it worse, but if it's already a bad problem, I think the commitment needs to be on the city to come up with a ten-year plan or something so that we start making the bad problem better. And then what he's gonna do, if it's not impacting it, isn't gonna impact it either way. So what we need is the, the city to step up and say how we're gonna fix this.
Yes, I would agree to that, but on the other hand, water runs downhill. That's a steep hill. It doesn't show very well on the photograph, but at the bottom lot on Canyon Road, there is a drop off not only east to west, but north to south because there's an embankment that is quite high. It's sharply cut and there's some very large trees on that embankment that are susceptible perhaps to falling into Canyon Road. They're large oak trees and you can see how that they're held at the very edge of this precipice simply by roots. So, I mean, there's some, some interesting work that's going to have to be done to develop that Canyon and Combs Road intersection. There's going to be increased traffic, so you certainly don't want trees falling onto people as they go by. That's not safe. And the problem with this, oh, the developer can't do anything. Well, the developer can do whatever and until the problems arise later because of continuing erosion, the developer is no longer involved. And then it becomes the city's worry about maintaining that roadway.
Okay, so Jim, since we're being told that the city engineers have already looked at this and we're being told that this is monitored closely and all these other good things, by next council meeting, let's have a plan for how over the next ten years we're going to positively impact this area so that the homeowners can have peace of mind with a new development coming in that the city is going to address their issues.
And, and one more thing I would like to say is that the heavy equipment that goes into developing the two lower lots, the eastern, easternmost lots, the residents ask that that traffic please be confined to Combs and Canyon Roads and not to have road graders, large, heavy duty equipment coming in through the Hidden Hills entrance. That is another request of the residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tammy, can we make sure that that gets included? Or addressed somehow?
Yes, and I think Mr. Westergaard addressed that previously. That was an issue that came up at Planning Commission. As far as heavy equipment, you're not going to necessarily see anything that is out of the norm for a home builder. You are going to have some cement trucks when they pour driveway, things of that nature. But the developer has indicated that they will minimize the impact to the neighbors. And again, that has been put out there on the record. There's going to be some construction traffic that moves through there, but I think the developer, yes, has committed to minimizing that impact.
Thank you.
Tammy, I'm confident in the developer. I mean, if we're gonna have a developer do it, this is one that's, that should be doing it. What, down the road ten years from now, landscaping plans, when people buy the houses and they're changing their landscaping, they're still responsible for directing water, correct?
As far as a private homeowner in landscaping, we don't control that. It's similar to, you know, Mr. Standford now could come out there and clear the entire lot. It's privately owned, that's, you know, his right to do that. Same would hold true for a property owner down the road. If they change landscaping, if they remove trees, we don't necessarily control that on private property.
But they would have liability if they create a problem generally?
Correct. Correct.
And I would think that the owners would take care of those lots and I, I would hope they would control the erosion as much as possible, so.
The one thing I can say is nowadays we have much more stringent guidelines than we did, you know, twenty, thirty years ago, when some of this area was originally developed even longer ago than that. So the one thing the city can control is when these plans come in, we can look at them and, you know, we can monitor the best course of action as far as any kind of drainage for this property.
Okay. Go ahead.
Either that or we could just suggest that they build these homes as arcs.
Mr. Westergaard did point out, you know, currently with the amount of land that they have now under the current zoning, they could easily do three houses now. What they are doing is cleaning up the property lines, getting a zoning that is consistent with the rest of the neighborhood with what staff believes is minimal impact, more so than what, what could potentially be there with the amount of property that is there.
And since we're live, just, this is public and it's aired live. If anybody has any issues around town, please call the city. I mean, we, we do take the calls and we listen to people, so hopefully, hopefully you do that if there is an issue somewhere that needs to be addressed. Councilman Prester.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't expect an answer tonight and Public Works isn't here. You're standing in for both departments, but there are three things. One, that outlet down there, I'd like to know the size of that, the capacity of it. And I would like to know where it exits, where it does drain out. So we understand that better. I, I would also like to know, because I know we do have drainage issues in that area and into Jewel Park. And unfortunately, somebody got a dog park put in there years ago, which isn't in the park's master plan and it shouldn't be there. So Parks is aware of it. I think they're gonna be able to get it moved, but it's gonna cost some money. We need to put in a wetlands as part of a drainage issue. But I'm looking at a plan or at least an outline of how we're gonna do that. We did a little rocking and we did do some drainage to bring the water down into Jewel Park. That exacerbates the flooded dog park, but it helps the homeowners. So sometime in the next few days, I know everybody's got a lot of work, but I'd like to get those three things. What's the city plan for dealing with erosion and runoff in that area overall? And the size outlet and where it, it drains to?
Sure. And we definitely understand that there is erosion in that area. It's just the nature with the slopes and the existing conditions. We realize there's an issue in Jewel Park. Unfortunately, we're not gonna have a solution here tonight for everybody, but agreed, that's something that the engineering department and the other city departments as a whole can look at and we can devise a plan as to what would potentially need to be done to correct some of those issues.
Thank you.
Yes.
Let me do a final call for a public hearing. The public hearing is still open. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Or speak again?
Mark Westergaard, again, I, I won't belabor anything, but just a couple of quick points. The issues, I'd agree with Councilman Shannon, the issues that were really talked about are issues that exist today before we put a single stick of lumber up, so. But I will go back and, and just reiterate, this is such a sparse development. Three to five percent of the ground cover is being impacted by, by roofs here. And it is largely a wooded area with mostly sparse weeds because of the tree canopy. I, I'm suggesting to you that when you, when you go to a situation where you have sotted lots versus, versus that, that is one way that the drainage is improved simply by construction. So the onus is on us not to make it any worse and we understand that. And that's what we intend to do. And then the second thing on the traffic, which is there today, if you, if you go to the trip generation manager during peak hour, a, a single family home generates about one vehicle in that peak hour. So we have two, two houses that will be on Combs Road. We're talking about an extra two vehicles in the morning, two vehicles in the evening rush hour. So yes, there will be extra traffic, but it'll be pretty nominal. And last thing, Jerry just, he, he told me, you know, the equipment, this is not a job we're gonna use scrapers on and that sort of thing to do grading. I told you the grading was gonna be metal and I'm sticking to that. But will there be a cement truck here and there? Absolutely. Will there be a, will there be a cat to dig out a basement for a day or two? Absolutely. It'll be the same equipment that, that Jerry used when he built the fifteen houses in, in Hidden Hills when there were people that were occupying those houses at the same time. So that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Yep, sure.
There are thirty-two houses in Hidden Hills Drive. My husband and I won't own one car between us, so we generate only one vehicle. The city has done some traffic calming studies. The average number of vehicles through Hidden Hills Drive exceeds two hundred vehicles per day as it is. And since fewer people are leaving our area, more and more delivery trucks and other kinds of vehicles are coming into the area. So I believe that two hundred plus is still a very valid number of vehicles on Hidden Hills Drive daily.
Okay, thank you. Okay, public hearing is still open. Anybody else? Please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. And are there any questions or comments before we move on? All right, the third reading will be held August fourth, twenty twenty, at six P M. here in the council chambers. Takes us to, thank you, everybody, for coming as well. Takes us to item twelve B, ordinance number four zero two two, an ordinance to amend section twenty-nine dot five dash one through twenty-nine dot five dash twenty-five of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to city trees.
Clarification, that's resol, or ordinance number four zero zero two. I think you said four zero two two.
Okay, four zero, the ordinance is number four zero zero two.
Yes.
Susan, would you read that ordinance?
An ordinance to amend section twenty-nine point five dash one through twenty-nine point five dash twenty-five of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to the city trees and to provide an effective date.
Thank you, and I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak regarding ordinance number? Thank you, and I will open the public hearing. Uh, is there anyone here to speak regarding ordinance number four zero zero two? Hardly anybody here. Nobody coming forward. I'll close the public hearing. Uh, the third reading will be August fourth, two thousand twenty, at six P M. Uh, thirteen ordinances for introduction. We have none this evening.
Mayor.
Yep, oops, sorry. Councilman Prester?
Before you move on from four zero zero two, I would just like to thank legal counsel and code, and the people that have been working on this for some time. There was a lot of work went into the drafting, redrafting, input from the tree board. I thank them as well. But I, I think the modifications, the standardizations, the things that are in here in taking away from the tree board and putting the responsibility with the city administrator for dealing with the appeals, I, I think it's some very good work that went into this. Uh, it does mention in there, and I'll probably have an amendment for it, but it says that a city council member can be a member of it, and you did appoint me as a member. It says ex officio, though, so I would just remove the ex officio. It's a pretty simple amendment. And then, this Saturday in Washington Park, we saw a pretty good-sized limb fall out of a tree. Fortunately, my car was parked right next to it, and I just walked by there. As a joke, I put myself under the limb, and that was funny. What, what turned out to be good was nobody was injured, no one was hurt. There wasn't even a divot in the sod from the way it landed. It was a very synchronistic event, and once again, I feel blessed that my life, uh, could have been at risk, was at risk, from just the short time I went under it. But, we're losing a lot of trees in Bellevue. We're losing the ash trees. That was, is an ash tree, and we've got others there. So, in the ordinance, in twenty-nine point five point two-six, and I'll do that too, for each tree removed, one new tree will be planted, is what I'm going to offer also. Because if we don't replace these trees in the future, if we don't replace them now, we're not going to have old trees even to fall in the future. So I think as we're losing more and more of the established old trees, that it's a wise thing to replace them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Item, uh, fourteen, public hearing on matters other than ordinances. We have none this evening. Item fifteen, resolutions. Uh, and, uh, I will, actually, I'm going to recuse myself because I have a conflict on this one. I'll turn it over to Council President Prester. I will step up.
Thank you, Mayor, and the mayor is recusing himself. He is stepping away and has now left the room. Uh, the resolution has been read, and at this point, I believe we are open to a motion. Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you. I'll make a motion that we accept resolution number twenty twenty dash thirty-two.
Second? Motion by Councilwoman Welch, uh, second by Councilwoman Cook. Any discussion? Then Susan, if you would, please, call the roll. Call the vote.
We have five yes votes and one no vote, with Mr. Shannon voting no.
Okay, the resolution passes. Then, we have, and my screen is not cooperating with me. We then move to fifteen A one, which is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the S F four twenty-four slash S F four twenty-four D forms and certificates. And I believe we need a motion to approve that, so I would open Councilman Cook.
Thank you. I'll make a motion. We approve fifteen A one.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Cook, uh, second by Councilwoman Welch to approve. Any discussion? Councilman Shannon?
Just a question for legal counsel. With the mayor's conflict, should the city council president sign these this time?
Abby, do you think that, I'm going to ask Abby here, um, it is authorizing the mayor, which he could sign the ones he doesn't have a conflict. Would it just be easier to have?
I think it would be easier to have the city council president sign those, so I will update the forms.
I would offer that as a friendly amendment, then.
I will get those ready.
Okay, good catch.
Good, yes, I think that's agreeable, and I think that is, uh, wise, so, thank you.
Do you want to do an official motion for an amendment?
I will.
I'll, I'll make an amendment, or I'll offer an amendment that, uh, the city council president, rather than the mayor, sign uh, the forms on fifteen A one.
We have the mo- uh, amendment due to motion by Councilman Shannon, the second by Councilwoman Burns. Any other discussion? Councilwoman Welch?
So Abby, does that mean Councilman, the president will sign all of the forms, or just the ones that have the mayor conflict?
All of these forms are related to the, the action plan, which is what the conflict is, so I would say he probably will sign all of the forms.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just to take that conflict away until we hear from HUD regarding it.
And at this point, you need to redraft them, so.
Yeah, I'll just go in and change the, the language and take out mayor and put in city council president, so I will have those ready as soon as possible.
Okay, just, you know how to get ahold of me. Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, then I'll ask Susan if she would be kind enough and give us the vote.
And just for clarification, this is on the amendment?
This, this is the amendment. For my signature.
All voted yes?
Okay, now it's been amended, then we vote on the approval itself. Susan, if you would, please.
We have five yes votes and one no vote, with Mr. Shannon voting no.
All right, fifteen A one is approved as amended, and with that.
We now need the vote as amended, unless I missed that. Did I miss that? Okay, sorry.
No, good, good to double-check, but it is passed and done.
Now we need a mayor.
And at this point, uh, if the mayor wants to come back, otherwise, I will continue on. And he not wanting me to continue on, returns. Thank you, Mayor. We turn the meeting back over to you.
All right, thank you, Councilman. And we should be at sixteen. Current business, sixteen B, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with H G M Associates, Inc. to provide professional design services for the American Heroes Park amphithe- amphitheater project in the amount not to exceed twenty-six thousand eight hundred dollars. Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve item sixteen B.
Motion by Burns, second by Stenson. Any comments or questions? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just want to make one quick comment. I know Tammy is gone, maybe Mr. Risto. I, I know this sounds strange. I know this is the professional services for the American Heroes Amphitheater Project, but I would ask that we take more than adequate electricity back to the backside of that park, maybe for streetlights, and whatever would happen on a amphitheater as far as plugging in things. If we'd ever want to use those parking lots for a Riverfest thing, maybe. Maybe all those things would, instead of having a lot of generators and people running those horses. So I know there's a limit, and probably what you can do, but I think it's critical that we bring electricity and make things run, and, uh, go smooth if we have events back there.
Agreed. So, electricity is part of the long-term plan as well as the restroom. Restroom is on the north end too, so all those would be factored in as we go forward beyond the amphitheaters.
Thank you. Councilman Shannon?
And speaking of making things run, uh, I've had a couple of calls recently about American Heroes Park, and, uh, older people are walking out there, and, uh, they, they need a bathroom. They, they, they can't make it there and back, and, yeah, so, just a couple of calls.
There are porta potties now. Those were dropped a couple of weeks ago. We didn't put them in because of COVID, but, uh, we've put them in since, and I think it's been about two weeks. Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, it's been?
It's been two or three weeks.
Okay, so, yeah, still, still taking calls on those, so, good to know that they're there finally.
Councilman Prester?
Thank you, Mayor. The amphitheater is going to be on the north end. How, is that right? And how is that configured?
You know where the station is that U N O was going to take the old, the old dock? So it's just going to be just caddy walk, it's just that right on the other side of the park. I think there's a diagram. There is or not?
There's not one in the packet, no.
I thought there was.
I didn't see any.
I'm not seeing it in the packet.
Okay, so it, it will be, so where the station is on the river, it's just going to be right off the parking lot. The big question is when they designed that, where the sun's at, so there's a lot of things I'll take into consideration, how the noise will, will or will not affect the adjoining neighborhoods, but that's kind of the intent, is to put it right next to that old docking station. I don't know what we want to call that, but right that area.
Okay, and that was my concern, that we're looking at, as, uh, Councilman Cook said, the big picture, and I'm just not sure of the best configuration, but the general area is near that parking lot on the north end, and then those factors will be taken in once it's, sometimes the, the design of it has to configure with the layout of the land, so somehow they got to work together.
Correct, because as we go forward too, is where we bring our electrical in, and then, uh, water for the restrooms and the likes, all those things will be considered, but, um, this design firm too will look to make sure that's the right site for that to be on, to fit what, you know, so you don't have a dysfunctional amphitheater either, so that'll all be taken into that part of the study, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions, comments? Motion by Burns, second by Stenson. Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item seventeen, administration reports, um, so a monthly report will be given at the first council meeting of every month. July report will be attached to the August fourth meeting, so we have a plan going forward there. Councilman Burns?
Yeah, is there a justification for this? The reason, yeah, just for the monthly report rather than the bi-weekly?
Yeah, what they're doing is they're updating you as to what has taken place and what's, what's forwarding, like into the next month. What a lot of these lists became were just like a things-to-do list. Um, so every two weeks, they're recycling some of the same information or very limited information. So a monthly recap was just kind of viewed as being the best way to inform the council, um, as well as, you know, what's, what's transpired, as well as where we're going forward, instead of, um, every two weeks.
And then recycling some of the same information?
Yes, uh, uh, not to, it just seemed like mindless work. Um, then people are just looking to plug stuff in, so what we're looking to do is get the, the best information to you, but do it all like as in a summary report of what's transpired for the month. Sometimes like the first two weeks may be very limited, and then all your action happens in the next, so then you get, I don't want to call it a blank report, but you get kind of like a what I did today, which is, in our opinion, a little worthless, so trying to give you better information.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Councilman Prester?
And, and that was done in conjunction with the department heads that are putting a report together, so they had input as you modified that.
Yes, so like if you take finance, I mean, for him to give you a mid-month, it's easier for him to recap at the end of the month. Fire Department, Police Department, same thing, activities that are being, uh, transpiring throughout the month or Public Works. You know, you could just be saying, I'm working on a project, but at the end of the month, you may get more meatier information, so it's to keep this thing from being kind of a mindless dribble of information, is to get meaningful information to you, so.
Meaningful information, and at the same time, not overloading staff.
Yes.
Doing stuff that's giving us some information that we already know.
Correct.
Okay, it is useful, though. I do like seeing it.
We kind of looked at what some other cities, some other cities don't even do it, but we did look at quite a few other cities. It would be similar to our size, and what do they put forward? And it was kind of modeled after a monthly too. It just seemed like the best format, and this report should improve as we go along, but, um, that monthly seemed to be more beneficial as far as how that information was gathered and summarized for you, as well as what, what's on the outlook for the upcoming months, so.
Maybe make it more of a meaningful report versus a fill-in-the-blank.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, item eighteen is a closed session, and I think, uh, Councilwoman Welch has a motion for us.
I'm going to move that the city council go into a closed session at this time for the protection of the public interest. The subject matter to be discussed in closed session is litigation updates. The following individuals will be included in the litigation updates. All co- city council members, Mayor Rusty Hyke, City Administrator Jim Risto, Attorney Bree Robbins, Paralegal Tony King, Community Development Director Mark Elbert, Captain Tim Melvin, Acting Public Works Director Dean Dunn, and Risk Manager Janie Jennings.
We have a second? Motion by Welch, second by Prester to go into closed session as stated by Councilwoman Welch. Um, any questions? Any other questions? Okay, please vote.
All voted yes.
It is now seven twenty-three, and the council has unanimously voted to go into closed session.